Are we ready to go? All right. I will call a meeting to order this evening pursuant to Section 7 E of the Open Meetings Act. I, as President of the McHenry County Conservation District, have determined that it is not practical, a public meeting of the Board of Trustees for April today is not the 20th, 15th in person. Due to the current pandemic, members of the public requested to attend through video conference. Okay, that's um. Would you permit everyone rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Present.
Trustee Thomas?
Present.
Trustee Brant?
Here.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Henning?
Present.
Well, everyone is here. Very good. Nice to see everyone tonight. It's been a while since all of us have made it, I think. Very good. Uh, with that, uh, we're we don't, we can skip three, two, because we're all here. Public comments number one, so is there, Stephanie monitoring the public? So Stephanie let me know if there's anything with their hands up.
I don't see anybody.
Okay.
I could make a comment.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm on or not here.
And your name?
Kevin Ivers.
Kevin, okay. How are you, Kevin?
Uh, Woodstock, Illinois. So on behalf of the McHenry County Conservation Foundation and certainly as a resident here of McHenry County and past trustee, just a word of appreciation again for the service and leadership of the Board of Trustees and staff of the district. And also just in terms of the foundation, I wanted to speak specifically to the appreciation for the opportunity to work with the board, for our commitment to working with you in the mission and district overall in terms of our service to the county. And of course, as we hopefully transfer into a new world here in the state of this pandemic, that we continue to look forward in building our relationship together. So just to affirm again our connection with you, our dedication to you and your mission and vision, and looking forward to what's to come. So much to come, of course, and much appreciative for the opportunity and again committing our dedication to working with you all and hopefully that we can meet together soon again in person. So appreciate the opportunity.
That is what I'm looking forward to. We have this beautiful site here. It seems like we could get together somewhere along the line, but to meet and discuss our common goals and where we're trying to go. But we really appreciate everything the foundation does for us and steps up and helps us with special projects. And we are very fortunate to have your group working with us. So thank you for the comments.
I second that.
Thank you all.
Look forward to seeing you sometime.
Mm-hmm, likewise.
Anyone else? No one else, Stephanie?
I still don't see anybody.
Very good. Well, we'll have a second chance later on. So we're getting to new business. Does anyone have anything out of the regular meeting agenda items they'd like to discuss? Bill?
Can I ask for an update on the security issue? I got an email about fishing scheme in the Dropbox of my outlook. Is this an appropriate time to talk about that?
Fine.
Yes, we're gonna, and we have Larry Kravitz online. He's gonna make a presentation next about our transitioning to Microsoft from the exchange where we're at. And Stephanie is here. So if there's something specific of how we're migrating, and that was one of the things as a proposal. So we're gonna hear about that tonight.
Well, has something happened that I need to?
Did you get that email?
Yeah, we all did.
What is that email though?
That was
Oh, it opened up and said it was the scam, the scam phishing thing.
I didn't open mine.
I never opened mine that day.
I opened it, shut right back down.
Stephanie, so we're talking about an email that came out of
Yeah, that was me. That was a phishing test.
Oh, so I
So I don't need to send the
I failed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just for clarification, I mean, if you open up the email, I mean, like, you know, little thing, that doesn't do anything until you hit on any of the things.
Right. Correct.
It pulled me because it seemed to be coming from an internal source.
Oh, the dro, the dro, the dro box, the dro, D R O.
And just as a reminder, we do have that voluntary phishing training if anybody wants to, you know, check it out. We do have it for you guys if you ever want to see it to give you hints and tricks to spot them.
Yeah, I actually did. I had signed up for originally, but when I fell, I just, I missed the deadline. And somehow it told me I completed them, but I was able to go back in and review. So I did the one that everyone did, but I think there are two more. And they're real short and they do a little quiz at the end?
Yeah.
And they're not, did you do those as well? In addition to the one we all had, I mean, they had several.
So Stephanie does that and it's great. I mean, thank goodness, if she catches a center phishing tests that are there, you know, then through some outsider that'll end up doing something more devious to the district. And not only for work here, but your personal lives, your own after things that you've got at home and in different places. Thanks, Steph.
I
You have something?
Yes, I do. On the agenda, 1212, Resolution 2132, the IDNR snowmobile grant. I, I, I think, I don't know how you could say this. I believe in partnership, but I don't think that's mission critical. And I'm wondering, everybody's cup is full. And I don't remember anybody from the snowmobile community ever come and support us getting our levy. So it's a non-admission critical issue. I think staff, I don't know how many other things like this staff does, but staff's plates are full. And the only reason I'm bringing it up is I know it's an easy thing and it's partnership and but I do have a question. It said in the narrative, the snowmobile association was doing this for 13 years. And it says we've been doing the administrative for only three years. Is that correct? I think I was seeing this in my first term.
John, do you want to speak to the terms of the snowmobile and our partnership?
Sure thing. A dozen to 15 years ago, I don't, I lose track of time. The, the association came to us and said, there's this grant source in Springfield. We can't tap it, but local governments can. The local use it for grooming and paying for trail signage and things like that. We hadn't tapped that in years because the association was, was doing those kinds of things and their, the club members and things like that. So we agreed at the time to go ahead and, and implement that, go ahead and apply. We have been managing it for the entirety of that time. So I, I may not have been I must have made a mistake in there. Yes, we have been managing it the entire time. It, it quite frankly hits us about one every three years when we actually have snow. You know, enough snow for them to be out doing what they do, groom trails and things like that. I think we've had a couple of years in a row where, you know, there've been enough snow that they've groomed trails and, and filled it, filled it in. So yes, Dave, your point, your point is well taken. The people that we had to do that project are no longer with the district. They're, and so we're just absorbing it in, in, you know, with, with other people.
John, I have a question. When you say manage it, what do you mean? What do we, what do we provide or what do we do?
The first stage is the application. We believe probably five hours of staff time, maybe six hours of staff time would probably submit it. It's not going to be elaborate. We just don't have the kind of time to be real elaborate about it. We could follow the model that we used in the past. So that's initial. And then I think every quarter we have to submit a report. And that report is one page. It says the exact same thing every single time. And so therefore it's just, it's, it's quite frankly printing it off and signing it and scanning it and sending it down there. So it's, you know, 10 minutes. And that's a quarterly basis. And then in addition to that, on an annual basis, this is where some work comes in. And Ben O'Day in Sites and Fleet is the, is the individual that actually manages that. He works with the association once a year, typically in April, to gather up their invoices and, and submit a report to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for their activities that year. And then what happens is they send us a check for that, for that amount, whatever that cost is. So that's really the management of it that, that goes into it.
So but I, so why aren't they making that last report? Why do we have to go get the bills? I don't get
They, they put them all together. We put them in the right form, so to speak. Ben had shared with me, he thought that was probably about another four hour project or so to, to get that all put in, in order and submitted.
And I guess I don't want to beat this bush. I don't have a problem with it, but when staff, when we haven't had our levy, have been refused to let us have a levy or we have not applied for the levy. Staff is down and they're doing a full job. I just think maybe there's a point coming up where we need to drop the things that are not mission correct. So that's my point. I don't want to belabor it. So I said my piece and that's what I wanted to do.
Okay, thank you. So it comes to, it looks like about 10 hours annually. You add up all the 10 minute deals, five hours, four hours, it looks like about 10 hours of labor.
Okay, it is small. I grant you that, but how, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just trying to gather information.
I get it.
So we, if we can pull that on Tuesday night, if you want to pull
No, I've had my piece. I said my piece, I'm good.
Well, anybody else have anything else they'd like to comment there?
I was just gonna say there's another several, I would say three to six hours annually to deal with that for the, both the audit and creating the financials as well as budgeting. So, you know, if we don't have the receipt yet, then you have to accrue that. It also has to be reported under the GADA, the Government Accountability and Transparency Act. So every one of those little grants has an accounting aspect to it that takes up some time.
I forgot that, Andy, thank you. Okay, thank you, Andy. Well, Elizabeth and I were talking about it a little bit and we didn't spend a lot of time at it. But I kind of looked at it as something we should, instead of just picking one here and there, we should maybe go in a strategic plan. You look at what you want to start doing and what you want to stop doing. And maybe this is one we want to stop doing, maybe something else is what we want to stop doing. We need to, we need to look at the staff we have, finances we have and go over everything. I don't want to, I want to sit one night and say, oh, we're gonna keep this one. Another night we're not gonna keep this, depending on the mood we're in.
If it kind of hits away.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to look at it somewhere along the line where we, we, we talk to staff or, and everyone and say, okay, where do we want to go? What ones are critical to us, which ones are not? And then put some kind of a plan together as how, how we manage.
I'm totally agree with that. That's perfect.
That's what I look at. I don't know if we're ever gonna pull that all together, but that, that's what I think we need to do.
I do, that's a good plan. Thank you.
So that's where I look at it. Anyone else have anything else they'd like to talk about? Okay. Then we move to Sanju 5.2. Andy, are you peeing this one up? Or is Elizabeth?
Uh, well, we have Larry Kravitz from the center. So Andy, do you want to introduce Larry? I'm gonna stop sharing here if you've got a presentation so that everybody can
All right. Yeah, we asked Larry to, we, we had sent out, I believe Elizabeth sent an email out and then there was a board summary, obviously talking about this state sponsored threat actor believed to be, I guess, known to be from China infiltrating the Microsoft Exchange server. So back in March, early March, there's a security update announced for it. You probably heard about it. So I asked Larry to be here. Larry's the IT Director for Concentric Integration. They provide the third party IT support. They work very closely with Stephanie. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Larry and Larry can talk about, kind of give you a, maybe a quick history of what happened, what he did, and then any updates through today, if you would, Larry.
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep, everyone can hear me? Great. I was having a little bit of a microphone issue. So I'm Larry Kravitz. Again, Andy did a nice introduction. So the district, like many organizations, has had an email server internally for their organization. It's been a standard practice for 20 plus years. Hosting your own, managing your own, doing those kinds of things. So, you know, as we know, there are security updates to everything. And as it goes along, the time to patch and remediate issues has been shrinking and shrinking and shrinking. As you've probably seen in some of the other news, products like SolarWinds and all sorts of things have been compromised from what we call nation-state, right? Outside the U.S. Is it for personal gain? Is it for probing? Is it for launching potential attacks, gathering information, ransomware? Don't really know. So I'll give you a kind of a summary of the incident, what we saw and what we did. So late on the 2nd of March, which is a Tuesday, there was a notification that went out from the, basically the, the federal government about, hey, patch your Microsoft Exchange servers. We're seeing an uptick in potential compromise. The, the word in the security community was that these nation-state hackers, which means they're being paid by a government, caught wind that Microsoft was going to release a patch within a few days to address these critical vulnerabilities that actually have been in Exchange products. Microsoft Exchange, which is like the de facto standard for email services for businesses, had been in place, these, these vulnerabilities since probably 2010. So a long time. By the next morning, we got you guys patched. I talked with Stephanie. We rebooted the server, applied all the updates, did all those things. And then started to look for over the next couple of weeks, what we call indicators of compromise. Hey, did anybody get in and do anything, right? Because again, these have been going on for a long time. I'll give you what, what this really looked like was it was the equivalent of people checking every door on every street in the world, looking for someone that had an open door and then trying to put stuff in the network so they can move side by side and get information out or do ransomware and things like that. So I went through and with Stephanie, we, we looked for these indicators of compromise. We didn't see any of the things that short of someone kind of turning the knob a little bit. I'm just kind of paraphrasing a bit, but someone kind of looked to see if you guys were vulnerable. And I saw that attempt, but I didn't see any of the other things that said, hey, someone got in and started doing stuff in the network. And so we followed the best practices released by the, the federal government and the CISA and just started to look around over the next few weeks. Again, actually yesterday, there was a patch and another emergency patch. So the long and short of it is you have some holes in your network that allow, you know, remote connectivity, checking email remote and things like that. We should probably seal that stuff off, right? Which we've talked and we're gonna move forward with. And let's give that to Microsoft. They're gonna be best equipped to handle the security for organizations rather than the district is doing a great job, but you can only really do so much. You know, you don't have the resources that like a Microsoft or any of these large companies are gonna have. So you pay a, a service fee, just like you would for any kind of email service. You do that now, it's a different kind of expense. So the, the long and short of it is no indicators of compromise. We didn't really see anything, but let's, let's take this as an opportunity to say, hey, we made it through this first pass. Let's move those resources up into a hosted solution, right? I don't think there's really anything else. Again, we've been able to, to keep the exchange environment reasonably secure, but you know, there's, there's nothing else that we can do at this point. You know, just keep on monitoring, patching until we can move things up into, you know, the Microsoft Cloud. I don't have a formal presentation with a slide deck or anything like that, but
Larry, that was perfect. I think that's what I was expecting. And I would just ask if there's any questions. The only other thing I would add, I guess, is just to be clear, the emails, you know, server really literally sits, you know, in the district's facility. So this takes that server out and it's, and that business model is very widely used. For employees under 100, it's tens of thousands of clients. So it's not that we're doing something unique at all. And that's why this was so widespread at a national level, because hosting exchange in-house was very, very common. So it affected thousands and thousands of entities.
Oh my God. They, they said within a week that 30,000 systems have been compromised. So that's how big this was. And in fact, there was a notification yesterday that the FBI is proactively going in and fixing people's machines that haven't been remediated. So it's like the FBI thinks this is so serious that they're going in, even if you don't give them authorization and fixing the problem for you. That's how big of a deal it was. So I say, let's move that risk away from the district. Let's get, you know, you, you made it through this kind of issue. Let's move that risk out and put the, the security in someone's hands that's monitoring 24/7, 365. They don't sleep, right? They've got teams and teams of people.
Okay, I, I concur 100%. Thank you and Stephanie for your effort. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, Stephanie did a great job. Coming out here and she's on that stuff.
Andy, do you want to talk about how the financing and what we propose to how we're going to pay for this?
Well, it's a $8,500 annual software licensing expense that we encourage annually that we don't have right now. We didn't specifically budget for it, but I don't have the summary right in front of me. We have budgeted to upgrade the backup systems and we had budgeted, I think, $4,000 more. Larry found a very creative, affordable solution. It's actually gonna get backed up to Microsoft Azure, the, the whole network. So on a separate issue, there's gonna be a savings from that of about four grand. The other reality is concentric integration in the past has had probably at least a half a dozen hours a year managing that exchange server. I'm sure there's years where it's more than 10 and years where it's, you know, maybe less than that. So there was another, you know, 1,000 plus dollars of savings there. And the other thing too, is this will be allocated to the individual operational departments. So as you saw in the summary, I believe the average expense was only 350 bucks. That's not getting put back on the managers. We administratively have a separate computer expense line item that we budget and we allocate it to each of the departments. So again, it's just $350 per department that we'll be dealing with.
A little favor. Sounds good. Want to have any questions? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
That's great.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay, we move on to 5.3, the discussion with GIS specialists, transition from part-time to full-time. And I believe Ed Collins is leading that.
Yes, and if I turn it over to Ed on this, tonight we just wanted to go over what we're envisioning occurring as when we have a position or a departure, we always evaluate that. So Ed can speak to why this is critical and then we will come back to you with the formal job description and grade it at another time. But we wanted just to get on everybody's radar. Ed, you want to explain the position, please?
Sure. There's just a few factors here. This is, some of this will be a repeat of information we've talked about in past board meetings or calls. But with the retirement of the Scientific Database Coordinator, we look very closely at where those duties could be shifted to. And at that time, we talked about the need to move the GIS specialist into a full-time position in order to be able to cover those activities that we are not able to retire from the Scientific Database Coordinator position. Right now, we have some extra hours that we are utilizing so that we don't fall behind with the GIS specialist. She's working more hours than she normally would in part-time. But we're upgrade, we're, by upgrading, I mean, we're looking at the duties of the GIS specialist to make sure we have all the additional stuff that will be covered in that job description. And we would bring it back to you, I believe, next month with a proposal to make it a full-time position. The good news is even with the movement of that position to full-time, there should be a savings to the district because we had one full-time position, one halftime position, or two full-time positions, one full-time, one halftime, and now we're going to just one full. So hopefully that will be completed by next month and available for you to discuss and determine if you'd like to move forward.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. So we're looking at downsizing a half a position then?
Basically, yes. And, and again, I'll repeat that the reason that we're able to do that is I think that the Scientific Database Coordinator position was so efficient at moving the backlog of data over the past 35 years into a digital format, that that major component of the job has disappeared and we're able to move new information each year as we accumulate it into the GIS and into the Scientific Database Coordinator. The other thing that's happened is our staff has become much more proficient at utilizing GIS on a day-to-day basis. So some of the common activities that the GIS specialist would have to do for staff members in the past, they're actually doing on their own now because they're becoming more proficient at it. So that allows us to savings too. And finally, we've moved to the, to the online hour system. So we were able to retire the hour system that Natural Resources had developed independently 15, almost 15 years ago before we had one and meld what we need to keep track of into our existing system. So as that technology has improved, it, it has allowed us, I think, to, to be prepared to make some, some good moves that are gonna make things more efficient and more cost-effective.
Well, that's wonderful. Good news. Thanks, Ed. Thanks, everybody.
Seems like so often we say we're gonna, we're gonna invest in some kind of technology and we still don't reduce staff. So this is great use of money. We also said we're gonna reduce staff and, and paper and it seems like you used more of both.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
That's great for thinking of all that. So now we're moving on to the response to public notice for the Village of Spring Grove Public Curing, annexed and zoning property south of Golden Road, Lysia Park Conservation Area.
I think we're gonna see some of the GIS just right now.
You are gonna see some of the GIS and I'm gonna walk through. We do have some slides to show you. And just to begin, we developed this policy that was board approached of how we respond when we get notifications for zoning, annexation, or when, it usually comes to us as a adjoining landlord. So we're responding. And of course, during the time when this policy was developed, McHenry County was growing very fast and we were getting these things. They would come daily, literally. And then we can respond and we shouldn't respond to everything. So we needed to come up with a system, which Ed's gonna explain, that would give us a scientific, factual way to assess whether it's gonna have impact, that would be an adverse impact. So that we only respond to things when they're moderate or ever have a high impact. Otherwise, you're crying wolf. And we are not a regulatory agency. That's not our role. But we do have a responsibility, as we've been dealing with a lot of different areas and encroachments, to protect conservation district lands and property that we own and, and what our plans are. So with that, we did receive notification about this piece of property. And the first notification that came out to the district was missing the necessary attachment, but that did get followed up on and we did receive that. And so this is just that, it was in a board package. This was the second one that came from the attorney with all of the information. This is going forward to the Village of Spring Grove on April 21st. And the meeting will be limited. They've been trying to find an alternative location for the meeting because they are expecting a large number of attendees. um, a large number of attendees at this meeting. So um, I did reach a phone call out to President Eisenberg. I haven't spoken with him. But um, we were able to speak with, with the uh, the, the attorney representing uh, the village and got some background on, on that as well as uh, the clerk. Okay, so this is just that. Now we're going to go into, this is our policy. Here. Um, this is in your board administrative material. I did pass that out to you. So if you weren't familiar with that. Um, Ed, do you want to take through here? Uh, we'll, we'll get into the chart here, but basically um, process if a response is required, sometimes a no response. And generally speaking, when we get these, no response is required. In this situation, which you're gonna learn, it does require a response. Ed, I'm gonna turn it over to you now on this. This is the matrix that was developed and then you can highlight the different areas that we score and evaluate on from a natural resource environmental.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And, and actually, it's, it's interesting that we have the opportunity to really talk about the threats matrix to the board, which we typically don't have the opportunity to do. Uh, I'm gonna talk, add a few things to what Elizabeth has already said uh, in order to understand how the matrix works a little bit easier. And then I'll go into what we, uh, what we have discovered with this particular one. Uh, I think probably from the time the district was founded, we began as an agency responding to threats. Uh, and it came from a variety of sources in the very beginning and up until the nineteen nineties, they were very, very sporadic. And they were analyzed very differently depending on what they happened to be and what the nature of the threat was. But as Elizabeth alluded to, by the mid nineteen nineties, they were becoming very commonplace and what's more, they were becoming extremely complex in terms of their potential impacts. Uh, and by two thousand and five, uh, uh, what Elizabeth says is li- literally correct. There would be weeks when we would get one every single day. And so to kind of develop this, a, a process that was uniform, uh, staff at Board Direction developed the threats matrix and then it was vetted by the board. And it has been used since two, about two thousand and six and it's gone through refinement during that time. And the refinements have occurred because new sources of information become available that helps us in analysis. And probably more importantly, because we have come to understand the nature of natural resource threats at a far finer level than was available in two thousand and five. Uh, even our own database, which has grown considerably, gives us the potential ability to analyze things in a way we weren't able to do even five years ago. Uh, the latest major change that some of you may remember or at least be familiar with is in two thousand and fifteen, we wound up getting so many solar farm impact requests that we had to develop a separate matrix just for solar farms. Uh, overall, the threat matrix has worked really well and is kind of a five-step process. It's fairly complicated when you get down to the procedures, but I'm gonna take it down to those basic steps so they're easier to understand. Um, we will receive a notification and those can come from anywhere. The typical, the typical notification comes because we're an adjoining landowner. But we will get notifications of threats from a larger planning groups like uh, CMAP. We will get them from local residents. Uh, and we'll even get them from developers who are asking for natural resource information so that they can produce a better plan. So they can come from anywhere and once they arrive, they're entered into a formal tracking system and there's a rough cut analysis that looks at them to determine, do we need to analyze them further? And I'll give you an example of one that was very common in the nineteen nineties and two thousands that we no longer responded to. And that is we would routinely get uh, stuff from the county about someone wanting a setback variance for their garage of ten feet. Well, that's obviously not a natural resource threat. But we would get those kinds of things anyway. If it turns out at that first cut that it looks like it needs further analysis, then it goes out to the various divisions within the district for each division to take a look at based on their expertise. Now, the case of our division in land preservation, natural resources, we'll look at it from natural resource impacts. But other divisions will look at it from planning or, or um, other type of policing, other types of things like that. So once it comes over to the divisions, um, they go through that process of analyzing and then whatever information comes out of that is sent back to the executive director and Elizabeth will prepare a potential response to the threat. Some of that information that comes back is used, some of it is just uh, archival stuff, but, but all that information goes into what will eventually be a response. Uh, and that goes out to the, wherever it's appropriate for that to go to. And sometimes we'll get a response back. Uh, um, other times, very frequently, we'll get additional information. Uh, and as, and that is, that is a very typical thing to have happen. When we get the first impact request, it's often does not contain detailed engineering information. It may contain, contain a concept plan. Sometimes it doesn't even have that. So you'll typically see, as you do here, this is called the preliminary impact evaluation matrix. And that is because as these things progress, we often get more information that allows us to refine what our initial analysis was about. And then that is archived, uh, because we need to keep them under uh, the Illinois Records Retention Act. So uh, how does that work in natural resources when we get one? There is basically a two-step process. And you're looking at the first part of that process right now. This is the matrix itself. And it's made up of eleven resource groupings that cover different aspects of natural resource threats. These obviously aren't the only things that could be involved, but they're typically ones that we will look at for every threat that we analyze. Within those, within those eleven groupings, there's twenty-five specific data sets that we will look at in order to make a determination. We use the information that's in the scientific database and in the spatial database with the geographic information systems. And what will come back is not just this matrix, but a written analysis that explains how we got to this and also a series of maps that will detail that as well. So you'll see that there are three categories on the right-hand side of the page. There are impacts that we call trigger factors, critical factors, and other factors. And let me explain a little bit how those work. Uh, if, if uh, we take a look at an analysis and it has uh, only others or no critical factors associated with it, it typically will fall into the minimal uh, impact rating and we generally do not do that kind of, do any type of response. Uh, if it, if there is a critical factor that is triggered, and you'll see on this particular one, if there is a factor that's triggered, it will have the, the uh, capital letter for either trigger, critical, or other on there. If it does uh, tr- if it does uh, in initiate either a critical factor uh, or a trigger factor, it will automatically move to a, a deeper analysis. So that's how we get to the point of deciding whether we're going to go further with the analysis and how deep we're gonna go. Usually if it has a trigger or even uh, uh, an important critical factor, it will warrant a response of some type or another. So in the case of the, the proposed RV campground, um, there were actually two submittals that involved everything from zoning changes to new classifications for uh, zoning areas since Spring Grove does not have a zoning classification for campgrounds. Uh, we looked at both of those. One was associated with the forty-seven acre parcel that the proposed RV park would go on. The second was uh, related to a how a residence crossed the street from that. We took a, a look at the residence and it didn't warrant the changes there did not warrant of, of further analysis from a natural resource impact perspective, but the proposed RV park certainly did. Um, so uh, Elizabeth, do we have maps that uh, go with this? Okay. And I will be jumping around a little bit here on my list um, to try to uh, to make sure I cover these. This is the cover sheet that comes with it and basically this identifies the area that we're talking about in terms of the local community. So you can see in this case, it's close to the unincorporated town of Solon Mills, which is near uh, the intersection of Route twelve and West Solon. Actually, the property fronts on South Solon Road. And you can see the PIN number is identified in white there. So this gives us an idea of where it's at. Glacial Park adjoins it on two sides. It joins it on the west and it adjoins it on the south. And important thing to note here, and you'll see it uh, at a closer view with other maps, is the distance from the property line on the west to Nippersen Creek is very, very small. Um, somewhere between fifty and a hundred feet. And that's going to be an important factor as we go further into this analysis. Next slide.
Hey, Ed, what, what's to the north of it? Is that?
Um, the, the Gardner, used to be the Gardner Dairy Farm. Now I think they're raising uh, beef cattle and general crops. That's, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, John, because that is uh, one of the oldest continuously owned farms in McHenry County. It was uh, settled by the Gardner family in eighteen thirty-seven. And the family has been on that farm ever since. The district has had a very close working relationship with the Gardeners over the years. Um, Dave Gardner, the, the father of the, the two young men who operate the farm now, uh, was a former board member of the Conservation District. So that is, that's just what's north of it. One of the last farms in that area.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the, the other hits. Um, this is the, the sheet that kind of summarizes it. And you can see uh, under the, the table that this set off a trigger because the site borders our property on two sides. It also contains a high-quality aided wetland. That's a critical factor. Uh, it also contains a very significant area of restorable hydroic soils. Basically, the entire parcel is hydroic soils. Even the area in the extreme southeast is not a particularly good soil. It's somewhat, well, somewhat poorly drained. Uh, the site's known to have a high potential for aquifer contamin- contamination and that comes from information that McHenry County Planning has. Uh, portions of it are also in the FEMA floodplain. And is identified as a cri- critical purchase for a macro site. And I want to explain this particular factor a little bit more. The district over the past fif- forty years has identified most of the high-quality natural communities in the county and areas that are worthy of some form of land protection, be that private or public. So when we say that's identified as a critical purchase, it does not necessarily mean a district purchase, but it really boils down to is the area has enough potential or enough resources that it's worthy of some type of protection in the long run. So when you see that, that's important to bear in mind that that doesn't necessarily mean that it is a district purchase. Um, okay, on to the next one. So um, this is where we move into the actual uh, impacts theirself, the factors. This one is not typically listed in our matrix. Uh, we will add things that are relevant to the report, even if they aren't in those eleven groupings. And in this case, because the site lies so close to Nippersen Creek, there are concerns related to both freshwater mussels, fish, and Blanding's turtles. Let me explain this one a little bit more. You can see the Nippersen outlined in blue. And those numbers you see thirty-five, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-nine, forty-two. Those are numbers are related to the uh, index of biotic integrity for streams. And it's a matrix that when we do a fish survey, we add up the fish, we look at the value given to them by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources and an index number comes up. These are pretty good. Um, so there's a high-quality uh, fish community in the Nippersen here. Uh, you will see a cluster of stars off to the left. Those are occurrence, known occurrences of Blanding's turtles. And Blanding's turtles is state endangered. There's a very large population in Glacial Park. And they, they are known to, through radio tracking, to utilize streams like the Nippersen for movement north and south during the year. So they will be using the main stem of the Nippersen or branch on a regular basis. Next slide. Um, these are, I I think you back, back up on?
Sorry.
If possible. That's okay. These are the mussel index numbers. And again, this is, you collect all the mussels, you look at the species, you see how many are alive or dead, how many are young. And the state has developed an index that gives you uh, an idea of how rich that stream is. And this is a very rich section of stream. Nippersen is probably one of the best streams in the state for remaining mussels. And again, you can see they're all up and down the north branch and the main stem there. Next slide. So um, now we start to move uh, into some of the actual triggers that occurred. Because the site adjoins uh, the district site, it, it required further analysis. Uh, I'm gonna talk a little bit about soils later on, but you can see some of the proposed amenities for this that have been laid out in this analysis, the stormwater detention basin, uh, fishing area, swimming area, structure and the septic field. There are other things as well and we'll see them later. Next. Um, a section of the site contains a high-quality aided wetland. And if you're not familiar with aided, it means advanced identification. This was done in the late nineteen nineties and it looked at all the wetlands in the county and rated them based on their quality and most of them fell out as either being farmed wetlands or wetlands of not high quality. So when a wetland is an aided quality, either has high function, high floristic value or both. And an aided wetland occurs towards the center of this site in a little lobe that comes into the property from the north. Next. This is a really, I think, important one for this particular site because it's the first time we'll actually take a look at the soils. When we identify hydroic soils, what we are identifying is soils that previous to being modified for some other use, contained wetland communities of some sort. And typically, they are made uh, usable for other uses by the installation of subsurface tiles and ditches, and this is no exception. Uh, you'll see that those, the blue to which delineates hydroic soils extends right onto district property on both sides. And I'll touch base about those tile systems a, a little bit later. So this is basically all floodplain soils. Next.
Hey, Ed, 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 before you go, I, I don't want to get too specific, but uh, there are two drains, classes of soils that are hydroic. There's very poorly drained and poorly drained. Do you know if, what, uh, any of those, is there coating down there or is it?
On the two soils, uh, Dave, are Millington, which is a soil that you find on floodplains. And the second soil is Will. And it is soil that has a high perched water table.
Thank you.
So there are no peats or mocks. They're mineral soils. And I think that the Millington is kind of unsorted because it gets a lot of floodplain deposition. Um, the entire site or most of it has been identified that by the county to have a high potential for aquifer contamination in this. Um, I'm sure Dave could speak to this because he was involved in it back when the county was doing it. It just means things get down in the soil much faster in these soil types. So a spill, a chemical spill or something like that could become a major issue. Next. It's also in the FEMA floodplain. So there's a floodway and the, and the floodplain. This is based on the current floodplain maps. FEMA has been redrawing the maps for this section of the Nippersen. They are not out yet. But it is likely from my understanding that that FEMA floodplain may increase uh, when the new maps are published. Next. And of course, it's been identified as a, as a critical site for protection. In this case, it is very closely related to the fact that the tile systems on this parcel and the tile sys- systems on the district parcel are interconnected. In fact, the outlets for some of the tiles that come off of this particular parcel outlet into the Nippersen through district land. Uh, we have had to repair these in the past because Will soil has a tendency to wash very quickly and we've had uh, um, situations where the flood, floods have basically washed out the outlets for a hundred feet back into the fields. And so we repaired them as quickly as possible because the, the subject parcel needed that drainage in order to do agricultural production. Next. Okay, so um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about a couple of other factors that we did not list because they're not on our matrix, but they're of concern here. And then I will discuss briefly this, this slide, which I think may be our last one. A couple other factors are of concern here. One is that this is a high-density development, even if it is a campground in terms of how many sites. And it's likely to have issues with light pollution and with the use of bug zappers. Now that may sound like, so what, what does a bug zapper matter? But there have been repeated studies that show bug zappers are non-discriminatory in what they kill. They kill anything that's attracted to them. They kill anything that's attracted to them. And more and more studies are showing that that includes many, many, many nocturnal pollinators like moths, which are drawn to those lights and are, are killed as they move in there. We have those types of pollinators on the lands just to the west and to the south of this on district property. So that is a concern. And it is one we raised when we were actually looking at doing the, the glamping proposal down at Camp Algonquin. The tile fields I mentioned. And the big concern there is not only that they're interconnected, but this type of development, these are likely shallow tiles because of the perch nature of the water table. And the construction of roads and the digging of ponds could have a negative impact on our, our own fields, depending on how those tiles are handled. And finally, the two major soil types that you find on the site that compose about ninety percent of the soils are Will and Millington, which I mentioned. The Millington is on the north end of the site. And the, the Will is on the center portion of the site. And you can see that many of the amenities are cited in these particular areas. And if you look at the current soil surveys for McHenry County, there is a section that rates limitations of soils for different activities. The one we're most familiar with, with is agricultural activity. But it goes into many other things as well. And both these soils are rated as having severe limitations for the following types of uses: campsite development, playgrounds, picnic areas, golf courses, trails, roadways, and ponds. So there are some major limitations associated with the site in terms of the actual development. So that's why, that, that kind of wraps up what I have.
Excellent, excellent.
And I want to say, and just to piggyback, and Ed, you did an amazing job. And thank you for your staff for reviewing it, reviewing this from an environmental perspective. We also let our planning department take a look at it as well. And as, as I alluded to, we were looking at citing a, a campsite on district property and took very cautious efforts to follow under the county ordinance of what would be required. So we're all about, you know, supportive of ecotourism. Camping is good to be outdoors, we have campsites. And I think there are some questions that we would also raise just about the setback of the property line, you know, access into, how are they looking in encroachment for us through to the creek? Because that's going to be a natural interest. Of course, planning a campground, you want to be near nature. And Glacial Park and in the Hacka-Tack Refuge Area is a great place. So it's more about really where our focus is, is not about these other areas that the neighbors may have concerns about. You know, everybody's coming at differently. We need to speak to facts and the environmental science is really what our letter would.
So how do we get this to Spring Grove?
So the recommendation would be, I will prepare this information into a letter with the exhibits that would go forth. We will send it so it can be read into the record. And so that is what I discussed today with the Council of the Grove, that we would send that off and wrap all of this up.
Great idea, we're on site.
Elizabeth, I, I neglected to mention one other thing, and I'm glad you touched on it. This area, Nippersink Creek, which is very close to this property line, is also a very, a series of very steep undercut banks. It's a natural outside bend of the stream. So there are some concerns if people did get onto our property, whether it was legally or illegally. That particular section of the park is closed. And we have had issues that go back to the early nineteen seventies, late nineteen seventies, where someone was injured trespassing on district property at Nippersink canoe base and jumping off a very similar slope into Nippersink Creek. They had no business being there, but they were injured nonetheless. This is the same type of cut bank, and it's very, very close to that property line.
Thank you, Ed. Bill has a question.
Do I remember that Val and Ed presented this property as something that was coming on the market and we might be interested in?
The district has had interest in this, it's on our land protection.
Right, but I mean, it wasn't, it is within my term that we spoke about this as a potential per- purchase or something to move forward on because the May family or whoever is the owner was giving indications that it was available. Am I wrong about that recollection? Maybe Val or somebody could?
We've had discussion with land acquisition, those are discussions that we have in closed session.
Oh, okay, alright, so this, I'm out of order perhaps, excuse me.
This is, this is Gardner, right?
Shut me down.
Anyway, we're, we're.
We can, okay, well, I'll, I'll say no more, but perhaps.
But it is, as you can see, we are on two sides, and it is in our land protection.
Okay, thank you, excuse me.
Any other questions? Ed, thank you very much for the presentation, it was very informative.
Yep, thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, everybody.
Hey, five-five the legislative program. Just if you're leaving that.
It is. Starting back, alright, thank you. So what we do every year, legislative session, it continues to go, both at the federal level and at the state level. And we put together basically a program that provides guidance. And that was on the two-page that I placed out there for you on Saturday. It has basically the tenants of, there's about seventeen items that are basically philosophical areas that we would support. Most have remained constant year after year, you know, opposing unfunded mandates, other legislation that would negatively impact our ability to take care of and deliver services. And they add additional administrative costs, increased liability, illegal cost, et cetera. So basically, I don't know if there were any questions, but the board had a chance to read through those areas. We did a few new items that were added this year. One, just as new grants come out to ensure that the extra additional administrative efforts that need to go along with it with transparency, that they don't become overburdenous, so we can continue to pursue those opportunities under data to ensure that protect, support, where is it? I forgot, I'm going to do this. With law enforcement, support the preservation of qualified immunity for law enforcement. We feel that's, that's important with our law enforcement team. And, you know, obviously supporting youth conservation workforce. There's a lot of legislation that's moving at the federal level for conservation, et cetera. So I don't know if anybody had any questions on that, but we can bring that forward to having the board adopt our program next Tuesday night. Any questions about that? I did also in the material that went out, I highlighted some bills that we're watching down at the state level and at the federal level. Things had moved, they had to get out of committee, so then now either backing rules and they're not going to move. Although we are seeing some trailer bills being added to other bills. The one for the design build was moving and was out of committee, so there's a lot of good things. There's always information on Open Meetings Act. You know, just, you could redo the stuff, there's a lot of bills that we're tracking. So it's getting there already because not everything's moving. And, and then once they get through out of this side, if they get approved at this house, you know, whether it be the Senate start or the House start, they'll flip and go to the other side.
Yeah, Ann was doing that before she left, are you doing it?
I'm doing that now, I had Ann helping me. And so Megan and I have not tasked her, as she's still learning the ropes here. But we'll get her up to speed because there is a lot to.
Lot going on.
Yeah, to do that, so we're tracking that. So that's, that's that. Any questions on the legislative program or any concern? And then I'll talk about our contact with legislators. So I did have a great meeting this week with the Senate Republican caucus, but the staffer, it happens to staff both Senator Will Cox and Senator DeWitt, stationed out of Algonquin. And we talked about a variety of different things. And specifically, some grant opportunities that we'd be looking for funding, looking to do some just communication out on different programs and activities and some of the metrics based on how the district responded to COVID. I started the process of asking for a Senate proclamation. I also then for House representatives, we'll get a resolution on the House side on the district's fiftieth anniversary, and then hopefully to the governor. So I will be making outreach to all of our state elected officials so that we've been in contact before we head down there to Springfield at the beginning of May. As far as the report card that I gave you at your desk, we had tried this exercise, and we were developing our KPIs on our strategic plan, which was about relationship building with county board members and our state elected officials. And the approach, in order for me to do this accurately, we'll start fresh on this. And basically, it'll be an opportunity, so on twenty-twenty, there's two of them, you have one for twenty-twenty and one for twenty-twenty-one. So for twenty-twenty, and we're doing it calendar year, not our fiscal year, okay? Because there are legislative changes that occurred as we know in twenty-twenty because we had state elected officers change, and we also had county board members and the chair change. So what I'm looking for you to do is just on the column, you know, throughout the year, or just to go back and just, your memory, it doesn't need to be perfect for twenty-twenty. But, you know, if you had contact, or you were able through phone call, through a meeting, you were at an event, and you were able just to have their, their window, your elevator seat for just a second, you know, then, then you want to mark that down as a check. You've made contact with that, that county board member, that legislator, the ones that are in two, it doesn't matter who, just check off that box. Then when we go into the next year, which is where we're at right now, going back to January, I would like you just to have that by your side and just keep track of that for me throughout the year if you make contact. And then at the end of the year, December, we'll collect all of that, and then I will be able to map that out on our, our strategic plan of how we're doing. Are we doing a better job of making contact, you know, intentionally building those relationships with county board members and the state elected? Okay, and I'm going to do the same thing for myself, and I think we're off to a good start this year.
Well, with the contact that we made with the newest county board members, we're way ahead, yeah.
So put a check on that box. So the last time that we sent this out, we tried to measure kind of their, where they were on the continuum of supporters for the district. And I think that got a little bit difficult because everybody was looking at it from a different lens. So this, I think, if we just start with the basic of, let's make contact and start that conversation, however way we do that, then, then we can track and see who we're not, who we're not reaching out to, and then we can form once we build those relationships, how they feel.
Check yourself. I think it's important that you have contact with them, whether they're supporters or non-supporters. For supporters, you want to build a support, if they're a non supporter, you want to have that discussion. It really doesn't make any difference where they're at.
Correct.
I agree, yeah.
But then relationship. So that's all I have on the legislative program.
Hey, thank you.
Alright, discussion and selection of proposals for rotational grazing in Pleasant Valley Conservation Area. And I believe Ed and Brad are leading those.
Yes, they are.
I guess I'm going to briefly begin, and, and then I'm going to turn it over to Brad. This was one of the more complex RFPs for agriculture that we've ever done. And I want to compliment Brad and Adam Rex in our Restoration Ecologist Department down there. They both worked long hours on this one. It involved tours of multiple people who wanted to look at this site, answering phone calls as people called in with questions. And then follow-ups on the RFPs, because as you know, people present them in a different manner, and sometimes you want to make sure you're, you're very clear on the information they provided, and you have to do that kind of follow-up. I think you, you will see our recommendation, which is the, the recommendation is authorization to move forward with trying to develop a contract with Ruder Bison at Pleasant Valley. But I'm going to turn it over to Brad, and, and he can fill you in on other details if you'd like.
Thanks, Ed. Yeah, I can make this relatively quick, and I know, hopefully, you guys have some questions. But we did our standard, similar to a bid, this RFP, we sent it out to our existing producers. We put it out in the paper, and we put it on our website to try to get the word out. And it does turn out, there's not a lot of large beef operations that can just go into this type of situation. So that's why we wanted to have an RFP where you can kind of phase it in. And that's actually what both producers wanted to do, is just kind of phase in and increase acreage of grazing over time. So that worked out great. We did have tours, we had the RFP submittals and an official RFP opening. And then we did, I don't think we included all that, but in order to fill out and make a complete proposal to, to the board, we actually submitted emails to the candidates to get more information because some of the RFPs were lacking in information that we needed. And then we sat down and evaluated and produced the proposal that you have. And so now we're at the stage where you guys get to, to look at it and ask any questions. But just so you know, we had four RFPs. We, we eliminated two mainly because they did not share the vision we had with going in and, and looking at all one hundred and eighty-seven acres of grazing. One just wanted to, to do some hay mowing. The other one just wanted to keep the sixty-five acres of pasture. We wanted to look at the whole entire site, and two candidates did. One was a cattle operation, one is a bison operation. And, you know, we can kind of get into the details if you want, as far as benefits of each one. But I guess I'll stop there and see if anybody has any questions at this point.
I really don't have any questions other than the lease for the cattle was less than a lease for the bison, fifteen years, the option two. The bison is not going to be that financially better. Definitely, the cattle would bring in more money and maintain more buildings. What got me, though, was the effort by the bison for public information. They're going to do public presentations, education, outreach, public schools, colleges. And then our oak preservation. The bison don't like to get under shade, so those oaks are going to be less in jeopardy. And, yeah, I'm, it's a surprise, I'm sure, for all of you, but I really want to get bison out of there.
Well, I do have, I do have a question that kind of gets to your point about the buildings. Am I right in that if, even if, even if the one with the cows comes in and is utilizing the buildings, aren't we responsible for maintaining them? And would be, that'd be responsible for upkeep, like if a roof, something happens with the roof?
Yeah, Lynn, for some, yeah, so the, the, whoever it is is not going to take care of all the buildings. They would do maintenance on the existing buildings that they had. But, you know, fix the door, paint this, you know, paint it, you do some upkeep. But yeah, and specifically, the cattle operation said, hey, we don't want to be responsible for, for any of the roofs. So it's, it's still, we are the owners, so there is going to be, and again, that's what we wanted to hear from each candidate, what you'd be willing to do. And most of them will take it as is and maintain it as it is. It's, it's, it costs a lot of money, as everybody here knows, to maintain buildings. So nobody wants to take that on completely and, and, you know, improve them.
I guess I have two questions. The bison operator is not interested in the majority of the buildings. Do we have the potential to utilize or lease those buildings to someone else during the time that the bison operation is running its program?
Yes, Bill, absolutely. And there has been a lot of interest, I probably get asked once a month from, from a local farmer, what's the status of the buildings? Because that we can, I, I think we can very easily do that. We would have to develop some type of license or lease, and that would go right to Val. He would be happy to do that. But no, there is interest in those other buildings, for sure.
Okay, and then the bison operator commits to, I believe, sixty thousand dollars of capital improvements, fencing corrals. And I presume that there's a lot of electrical fencing.
Yeah, so, and that's one thing, the, 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 the big difference between the bison and the cattle is the bison, they already know, hey, we are going to have to go in and, and redo the fencing. So they're planning on complete new fencing. And there might be some internal fencing, but there'd be complete new perimeter fencing for the bison operation. The cattle operation would use the existing fencing.
So during the term of the lease. So during the term of the lease, five or 10 years, whatever it might be, if we have a power outage, is part of their contract to have some type of temporary generator that they are responsible for getting that fence lit up again?
That's a good question. You know, that could be written in there. A lot of the farmers and President Hennig could probably talk about this, but they can have solar backup. I mean, there's a lot of different ways to power a fence, but it would be mainly, usually they have a woven wire or a bob wire fence and then inside of that, they have electric inside of it. So there's really two fences there and one that will help the animals.
I'm pretty sure bison would ignore a wire fence. And so I guess my point is this, I think bison would be interesting, it has a certain aesthetic and perhaps educational appeal. I think the liability issue bears sort of dotting the i's and crossing the t's on the maintenance of that electric perimeter. And so I would encourage you to hone in on that and be sure there's no misunderstanding. I'm not sure that, I mean, I've had the experience of a lightning storm mapping out my fence generator. And so we have lightning storms and I think electrical fences sort of attract that type of discharge. So I think they have experience doing this in other areas. I think we want to understand how that works and what backup is necessary and be sure that it's provided.
Yeah, no, I can maybe just address that quickly is the bison would like to stay if they're happy, there's plenty of forage inside the pasture, they're gonna be, they're gonna want to stay there. But again, there is, there's a regular wire fence and then there's electric on the inside of that. And even if the electric is not going, I mean, it's a reminder, the bison will think it's there. Once they get shocked, they do learn. But yeah, there's basically a standard fence that would keep them in place and there's electric just to support that.
And I would add, Bill, that if we move forward with trying to put the four corners of a contract together, it would come back to the board for review.
We'll check all of the pieces with Pederman, go through all the nuances until we learn.
Sure.
This may be a little bit out there, I don't know. You know, when we do the leasing on the farmland part of the, the lease is based on the future at that point. And I know that this is more of a straight out leasing operation and I know that they're putting in a lot of money and I'm not thinking within the first 12 years we've had this opportunity, but I just wonder if there's an opportunity down the line that maybe, because obviously this is an operation for them and it's a profit for them, if there's likely an opportunity to have, I don't know, that tied in to maybe to have the profits or something that the bison are confident. I don't know if that's even an opportunity, but I know we have leasing tied to kind of how the markets are doing. It's just a thought, I think with the amount of investment, that's not anything that we can get now, but if that's an ongoing return possibility of this number, I'd be happy.
This would be a little more difficult market, you know, with market, what they're, our agriculture leases are also tied to yield besides price. I'm not too sure, we gotta, we actually know what they're gonna turn out for a while yet. So I think that is something that's a down low.
Down low, yeah, down low.
Right now. More discussion? Okay, so then we'll move on.
Do we have concurrence to continue to move forward to negotiate, obviously, the four corners of the deal here?
See head shaking.
Yes, if they see that, okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad, thank you.
Hey, Elizabeth, you have a report for us.
All right, my report on COVID briefly. So we are waiting for the OI Department of Public Health to make the, and the governor to give us some better direction here. So not much has changed since we talked last month. We have continued to have staff receive vaccines, it's voluntary for that, so we do know staff is getting vaccinated. But we do know through our risk management agency and their guidance until IDPH makes a determination that even though you've been vaccinated, and we're not asking, the conversation comes in, do you ask for proof of vaccination to come back to work? How does that affect it? And their recommendation, you know, is, it really doesn't matter, I mean, that's a choice for the organization, but their recommendation as the risk management agency, even if someone has been vaccinated and they end up with somebody else at home that comes down, has symptoms of COVID or COVID has not been, then the individual employee has to go in and quarantine again, even though you've been vaccinated. So with that direction, we're gonna follow that lead. We believe it'll change potentially once we make some adjustments on that. So we're still being very cautious. We are making plans, we're still keeping masks, keeping social distance, you know, we continue to meet and evaluate our programs, for example, larger events, we're leaving that less than 50, but we do have Earth Day coming up this Saturday, so as long as it doesn't rain, we're all outdoors, it's not an indoor event. And cam numbers are doing well, registration's doing well, so we're continuing to facilitate that. We've had a few quarantines necessary based on family situations. So again, we're being very cautious and hope that, I'm looking at June, but you know, that's just a date on the calendar, I don't know. We've had spring breaks, we've had the holidays where there's been a spike of an increase and uptick, but we're hopeful it'll be back soon. So that's really my report on the COVID.
Thank you. Then I'm opening, meeting up to any other business, anyone has any other discussions? No? Hey, how about a public comment too? Do we have any, Stephanie, do we have anybody out there that would like to speak now?
Yeah, it looks like we have a hand up for Kelly Wagner.
Hey, Kelly.
Good evening. Boy, some interesting conversations today. I had a couple things. First of all, I'm pleased to have joined the food shed and we are, they're looking for a certain number of owners before Earth Day. So if you can get in there and buy your two shares and be an owner for $200, we can get to that number. So just something to think about. Also, I'm looking forward to Saturday's event at the Prairie View Education Center for Earth Day. I think that will be exciting and I plan to be there and see if I can drag my kids with me. We'll see. But let's see, two things from the board. First is we had a presentation today about redistricting. This is really a conflict for everybody, actually, in the United States. We have two ordinances that are conflicting. So you have one that says you have to have the census data in order to redistrict, but then you have the other that says we have to figure out by a certain time what our redistricting is going to be. And I'm sure you know, we don't have the census data that won't be to us by late August at the earliest. So there's been some talk of using data from 2019 from something called ACS. There's also talk of using 2018 preliminary census data. Neither of those, though, are fully accurate and the presentation we had today told us some guidelines that we have to be within. For example, the lowest county board, or actually if you're looking at any, any district, so whether you're talking about precincts or, but we'll use county board districts, the one that has the fewest number of people in it versus the one that has the most can only have a 10% difference. Ideally, you'd want to have very, very close, but sometimes that doesn't work. And right now, with our six districts, we are over that. We have an 11% difference between the lowest amount and the highest amount, which means no matter what, we're going to have to redistrict, which we should anyway. And we are talking about whether we're going to redistrict and keep six. As you might know, our board is going from 24 to 18, so six will be a very difficult number. So then we, we may go to nine or, and that would have two people per district, or we may go to 18, which is one person district. The smaller you go, the larger the error could be in calculations. So that's just something to keep in mind. This is happening all over the United States. There's been talk of possibly moving the primaries to June, so that way we would have adequate time to figure out all the redistricting. And there's also who's going to redistrict. Really, I think I would like in our county, if we could have at the least a bi-person committee, but an independent person, I think, would be the best for us, just so there's no, no conflict of interest or anything anywhere. So most exciting thing, though, is Tuesday, I'll be presenting a resolution to the county board celebrating the MCCD's 50th anniversary. So that will be happening at the beginning of the meeting, which starts at 7:00 on Tuesday. And I know you guys have a meeting at 7:00 on Tuesday also, so obviously I won't be at that. I don't know, maybe you could delay your meeting a half an hour and attend ours even virtually? I'm not sure how that'll work, but I'm excited to do that. I actually get to read the resolution out loud and I'm glad I could be the liaison. So if you have any questions or suggestions for anything, just let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
We also have Cindy with her hand up.
Okay, very good. Cindy, could you state your name and your address?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, very good.
Okay, great. My name is Cindy Skruckud, last name spelled S-K-R-U-K-R-U-D. I live at 4209 West Solon Road. And I just wanted to say that my comment is regarding the proposed RV campground on South Solon Road. I'm on the board of Friends of Hachmetac and the neighbors have reached out to us. Friends of Hachmetac had determined that this parcel isn't in the footprint of the refuge, but I'm also on the board of Nippersink Watershed Association, so I've been the one that's been digging into the environmental issues for that group and providing some of that information to the neighbors. As you've heard so well from Ed, among the major concerns is how wet this parcel is. And I think I heard Trustee Brant say, Camp Crone's a great idea, but not at this spot and I couldn't agree more. But I just wanted to say thank you for all the digging in that the staff has done, much more information than I myself has rounded up on the impact. So really appreciated your presentation and glad to hear that the district is going to be passing that information on to the Village of Spring Grove. So thank you, thank you for your, for your work on that.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Thank you for attending tonight and for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I can't figure out how to raise my hand, but my name is Gardner. I am the adjacent landowner for the campground to the north that Ed had talked about. I just wanted to compliment you guys on a really good presentation. I did a great job of thoroughly explaining all that and I think the Spring Grove Village Board is gonna hopefully take that on to good consideration because I think a lot of the people around here, the neighbors, are very emotional about this. And the, that's a very level-headed scientific explanation of why this campground shouldn't go here and I hope that they take that in consideration and I compliment all you guys for doing a really good job on that.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments and it sounds like you have a good working relationship with Ed there, that's great.
He got it right, 184 years, he was right, 1837, so we'd like it to stay ag land for now.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't see anybody else.
Then I would like to move, we go into executive session pursuant to C21 and C25 and C5 of the open meeting.
Thank you, Dave, is there a second? Linda? I need a roll call vote.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Yes, so motion carries unanimously, we'll move into executive session. And anyone who's welcome to come back afterwards, but we really have nothing else but a roll call and adjournment afterwards. So anyway, so we'll have an executive session and then we'll come back and we'll adjourn.
And thanks to Megan, we've got these hot ones.
Thank you. Megan, I love these hot.
Glad it helps.
Billy, you've unplugged, you think this is gonna go fast?
That was right.
Am I in?
President Hennig, yes, you are.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to, I think we have your counselor. Oh, we have to roll call.
Roll call.
You're correct, Dave. Good point of order. Megan, you have a roll call, please.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes, I'm here and we're still all here, so.
7:27 PM, we're here.
Yeah, so executive drinker, Kessler has one more announcement for us.
One more announcement for you, okay, two things. We have IAPD that's coming at 5:00 on Tuesday night and we'll go into executive session. In your packet, take with you when I put it out in the drop box, there are their rules for participation that they wanted everybody to be familiar with. They will be bringing in all the responses. The question I have to the board, are you interested in us getting some sandwiches or something so that if everybody wanted to come at 4:30 and we get some Subway or we order some out of the menu list? Would everybody be open to doing that?
Add beer? I don't want to fall asleep.
Okay, just say, would you?
With that being, we can do that, it is, we're gonna celebrate our anniversary, the proclamation, which will be at 7, but it would be nice to do so.
We'll see you here at 4:30.
We'll get that together.
4:30 now on Tuesday.
4:30 on Tuesday, we'll send a reminder and we'll get the food to you to get back to us so we can order the food for you to what everybody's gonna have. Do you have a preference, Panera or Subway? What do you like? Panera, does that make it easier?
Panera's fine.
Salad and you can get a sandwich or soup or whatever. Okay, so we'll do Panera. The other thing is there was, I did send out the template of the review that went out to everybody. I did get a few emails back and forth, they had some proposed changes. I want to be able to package that up in envelopes for you and to hand those out to you on Tuesday night. So I guess the question is, how do we want to handle that, President Hennig? Are there changes that need to be made or?
I was comfortable with it.
Is everybody else comfortable with what it was?
Well, the only, I guess my biggest concern was in there was a criteria for, this should be, is this public session?
This is, this is, yes, this is open.
Okay, there was a criteria for improving morale that is impossible to quantify, it's, and it was also pretty tough to do this year. Yeah.
I would agree with you.
So I would like to change that somehow, postpone it because of COVID, but it's next performance appraisal, make that wording.
We've got some suggestions, so I'll throw that out to everybody with those proposed changes and I will send that out. I think that's pretty reasonable.
Exactly what I was hoping.
Okay, so anyhow, I will get that all packaged up and then I think the timeline on that will be to fill that out, get it back and so the May meeting will do the.
Great, I'm good.
All right, so that's all, that's all I had, just wanted to catch that, so we have everything.
Perfect.
All right. Now I take a motion. Do we adjourn?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris seconds it. Okay, oh, we gotta roll.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Very good meeting.
7:30, thank you.
Thank you.